Good evening. The board has now returned from closed session and will begin the regular session of Keys Union School District Board of Trustees. Item four, board reports on closed session items and approval amendment agenda. 4.1, report on closed session items, we have none. Moving on to 4.2, approval amendment agenda, we have two. We're going to add 10.7 and 10.8. 10.7 is approval resolution 21-2207 California State Preschool Program Consolidated Funding Application. And 10.8 is approval of California State Preschool Program Continued Funding Application. Anything else?
There are no other items.
Anything from the board? All right, do we have motion to approve and add the 10.7 and 10.8?
I have motion that we approve.
Do we have first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the flax loop, but we have students here tonight, so you guys want to do it? Come on, girls. Perfect time. And I'm just putting them on the spot.
They are, yeah.
What's he lost to do?
I've seen that. They better be cool.
Come on, Roxanne, you can do it. Uh huh. Thank you, girls.
Please stand for the pledge. Ready, begin.
Thank you, Roxanne, thank you, Jocelyn. Moving on to invitation to address the board of trustees, do we have any? All right. Moving on to seven, announcements. 7.1, Spratling Middle School Turkey Art Contest will be through November 19th. 7.2, Keys Elementary School Pause for Applause Awards is November 19th from 8:30 to 10:00. 7.3, Spratling Middle School Mindfulness Assembly Presented by Kaiser is November 20th. 7.4 is Thanksgiving Break, No School November 22nd through the 26th. Keys, 7.5, Keys to Learning Charter Case Six Math Challenge Kickoff, November 29th. 7.6, Keys to Learning Charter Career Day, December 2nd. 7.7, Spratling Middle School Movie Night, The Grinch, December 3rd from 2:30 to 4:30. 7.8, Spratling Middle School Spelling Bee Competition, December 8th. 7.9, Spratling Middle School Spirit Week, December 13th through 17th. And since school started, this is the longest one that we've had, that's great to see. Moving on to eight, recognition and staff reports. We've read the reports, did the board have any questions?
No, I don't have any.
All right, moving on to 8.2, student reports. Roxanne, Jocelyn, come on up.
Hello, we are student representatives for Spratling Middle School. I am Jocelyn Jimenez, an eighth grader at SMS and president of student council.
Hello, I'm Roxanna Orozco, an eighth grader at SMS and a member of student council. The first event we will be talking about is the pumpkin decorating contest. It was about two weeks long and we had at least five winners. Each month we have an art contest and this month we're doing a turkey art contest.
We had a red ribbon week, October 25th through the 29th. The spirit days we had were Monday, Twin Day, Tuesday Sunglasses Day, Wednesday Sports Day, Thursday Crazy Hair Day, and Friday Neon Day. During Red Ribbon Week, we also had a fall rally. We had three different activities, which were musical chairs, balloon tag, and mommy rap.
We also had a Red Ribbon Week poster contest. The theme was drug-free looks like me. The winner was a sixth grader Vanessa Vasquez. She won in a hundred dollar gift card and she won in the county competition. We had a Red Ribbon Week door decorating contest and the winners were Mrs. Beverages and Mrs. Lil's Selective Classes.
With both SMS spelling bees completed, we have our participants and winners. For our sixth grade spelling bee, the participants were Haley Cordell, Ashlyn Baines, and Kobe Watson. No one achieved a required number of correctly spelling words to attend the county elementary spelling, but they gave it a good try. For seventh and eighth grades spelling bee, the participants were Valentina Morales, Zachary Shiver, Alexander Valenzuela, and Anna Magutierrez, and Paula Valencia. The top two spellers were Valentina Morales and Zachary Shiver. Valentina and Zachary will participate in the junior high Stanislaus County Spelling Bee at the end of November via Zoom.
We have girls' basketball going on right now. The eighth grade standing are six wins with zero losses. For the sixth and seventh, the standing are seven wins with zero losses. Girls' basketball tournaments will be December 7th, 8th, and 9th. Also in December, we will have movie night on the third. We will be watching The Grinch and snacks are to be sold.
This month's Students of the Month for eighth grade was Alexia Alvarez, seventh grade Pablo Sanchez, and sixth grade Noam Gonzalez. Yesterday, we had turkey dinner and it was a great success. We sold 257 meals. With donations, gravy sales, and ticket sales, we are very close to $3,000.
We have brought pictures of the various events for you to enjoy. Please pass them around. Thank you for your time and have a nice evening.
Thank you. All right. I just want to add, they're both sports players and they're always active and they both worked the turkey dinner last night. So they're probably pretty tired. Thank you, girls. Moving on to 8.3, special education local plan area, SELPA, Mr. Devens? You got to top them.
I don't know if I can top turkey dinner. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you having me here this evening. I'll just approach and pass this out.
Sure.
So I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Brazil for having me. I appreciate the board giving me time to talk about SELPA. It's probably a term that you have heard of, but are not quite sure what it is or what it means. So I'm here to elaborate a little bit. I'll start with a little bit about myself. I wanted to teach chemistry and physics. And I went to a job interview. I was running a gas station. Decided to teach chemistry and physics, went to a job interview at a non-public school. And non-public school, for those of you who aren't familiar with non-public schools, or for children who are in special education, in this case who are emotionally disturbed, whose behavior is such that they can't be contained on a regular school campus. And so generally, we're talking about children who have really bad cases of anxiety, or bipolar, or depression, or something like that. And it was at that job interview where I got the job and after that, that I really decided that special education was where I needed to be. I started out as a paraprofessional. I became a teacher of emotionally disturbed children after that. After that, I was a school psychologist for several years. And then after that, a program specialist for 12 or 13 years. And now I'm the director of Stanislaus SELPA. But if I look back, which when I was a little boy, I remember when I was in kindergarten, there was a little boy and his name was Surrey. And Surrey didn't talk. And I was five at the time. It didn't bother me that Surrey didn't talk. But I remember and it was quite striking because after four or five days, he disappeared. He never came back. And it wasn't until I had been in special education for some time that I realized that probably what had happened to Surrey was that Surrey went to a school for disabled children. This was way back at the beginning of special education, when if you were disabled, you just went away. And it occurred to me at that time that Surrey had one kindergarten and that kindergarten he missed. Just as the children who I taught in non-public schools had four years in high school and they missed that. They had it at the non-public school, but they didn't have it with their peers. And so I use that as an example to say how far we come in special ed. But also what drives me and what moves me is to include children with disabilities as much as possible into our daily lives. So anyway, that's a little bit about me, I digress. So to talk about the what, the who, and the why of SELPA. So the SELPA is governed by a council of nine superintendents and two alternates. We have three permanent members. Those are the County Office of Education and the two largest school districts by ADA. We have two union members, two unified members, one at large member, and one what we call DIS, or for really small districts. Like Knights Ferry or Roberts Ferry or Grattan, very small districts. That my job as SELPA director is I act as kind of a liaison and an advisor for the board for the different committees that exist. Two of the committees that exist are the Program Advisory Committee, which, if you'll excuse me, I'm going to take this off. I have trouble breathing. Sorry. The Program Advisory Committee, which consists of all of the programmers in the SELPA, which there are about 50 or 60 directors, assistant directors, assistant superintendents. They come together once a month and we talk about policy and procedure. We talk about things that are of interest to the SELPA. And they advise me on what they would like me to advise the council on. We also work with the Business and Programming Committee, which is all the, obviously, business people and programming people in the SELPA. They meet once a month as well. Advising those two committees are some several executive committees. They're all made up of the professionals in the SELPA that have specific interests. We have like a procedures committee, we have an effective practices committee, we have an emotionally disturbed committee. And they all advise and write policy and procedure that's taken forward to those two bodies, PAC and BNP, and then which goes forward to superintendent's council for approval. Slide please, thank you. This is our current superintendent's council. You see that Dr. Brazil's the vice chair. Slide again, please, thank you. The other who of SELPA, so we have program specialists that represent districts. Not all districts in the SELPA contract with us for program specialist time. Keys does. And what we do for districts such as Keys is we represent you at IEP meetings and make sure that, first of all, we're doing what's right for kids. But second, that you are protected legally. As we all know, special education is a very litigious area. And so between the three program specialists and myself, we have about 100 years' experience in special education. So we're very lucky to have the team. We all come from different backgrounds. One other thing we do at the SELPA office is staff development. So this year, we had workshops on negotiation, on conflict management, on facilitating IEPs. We've had workshops in the past for paraprofessionals on how to be the best paraprofessional you can be, on writing and reading strategies for children. So we present a lot of workshops and throughout the year, a lot of legal workshops, where districts come and they can hear from lawyers about case law and things that are pending in the field. Next slide, please. So what exactly is a SELPA? SELPA is an area. And so the story begins in 1974 with the California Master Plan for Special Education. And what the legislature and the California Department of Education decided was that there should be these areas in which, that were sufficient size and scope, that were large enough to serve students in a certain area and had a wide enough scope of service for those students. So for example, in our SELPA, in every SELPA, we have to have services for children who are deaf and hard of hearing, who are visually impaired, who are emotionally disturbed, children with autism. And that's part of my job as the director is to make sure that those services are accessible to children. The SELPA, which stands for Special Education Local Plan Area, that's what we are. We're a group of districts that work together to get services to children. If you think about Stanislaus SELPA or Stanislaus County, Stanislaus County is like a donut with a hole in that the hole in the center is Modesto City. Modesto City is its own SELPA. But all the other 25 school districts, including the County Office of Education, are part of the Stanislaus County SELPA. And like I said, our job is, is that we come together, big districts and small districts, regionalized providers and feeder districts, and we work together to serve kids. That's what we do. One of the other purposes of SELPAs is to give local control and accountability. So the money that comes from the CDE or from the state filters through the SELPA office and is dispersed the way that the SELPA has decided that it's to be dispersed. So there are, as I said, 135 SELPAs and each has decided its own way of funding, as we have. And ours is based on the ADA of the district. Next slide, please. How did our SELPA office come to be, or our SELPA? So about 25 years ago, right when I was starting in special education. Oops, one more slide, please. Thank you. About 25 years ago, right when I was starting in special education, the County Office of Ed administered all the services for students who are disabled in the area, in the SELPA. So they had their own autism classrooms, mod severe classrooms, emotionally disturbed classrooms. And then about 25 years ago, some districts decided, you know, I think I can do this just as well at a less cost and do good things for kids locally. And so what was born were these large regionalized districts. For example, Turlock. Turlock is a district that's large enough of scope, in scope, that it can provide the services that children need all on its own. They do need some specialized support from the county, but most of the services, they are able to provide on their own. So you have regionalized providers like Turlock, Siri's. Up in the north, we have Empire, Waterford, Patterson. They all do programs regionally. And why I say regionally is because there are many small districts like Keys or Chatham, Knights Ferry, Hart Ransom, districts like those, that don't have the resources. And so they send their children to the regionalized providers to be educated. And thus was born a relationship between regionalized providers and feeder districts, wherein we both need each other. The smaller districts need the large regionalized providers because smaller districts don't have the resources or the scope to provide for children that they need to, that the children's services are guaranteed by law. And the large regionalized districts depend on the smaller districts to pay. They pay what's called fee for service. And so really, next slide, please. It comes to our vision of a SELPA as we are all in this together. We have 25 school districts. Getting 25 school districts to agree on one thing is difficult. However, I think what most people take away from it is sometimes we win, sometimes we don't win, but we always do what's right for kids. And that's what gets us through. And next slide, please. Other functions that the SELPA office says, as I said, we disperse funding. We have a CBO who works with your CBO in your district on some monitoring functions that the federal and state government asks us to do. We get about $6 million in mental health money a year that comes through the SELPA office and that's used to underwrite classrooms for children with emotional disturbance. I was very proud to be the chair of the committee that put the ED classroom structure into place 10 years ago. And ever since we've had those classrooms in place, we really have reduced the number of children who have been sent to non-public schools. And so that's always been a way for me to sort of pay back those kids. Like I said, I've never laughed as hard and probably shouldn't have laughed as hard at some of the things when I was teaching. Emotionally disturbed children usually are pretty bright, so their sense of humor is pretty sharp. But I also, you know, I never cried like I did the first graduating class I had from there. And so I've always tried to pay that forward and pay that forward for all children with all disabilities. Another function that we have is low incidence funding. Low incidence disabilities are disabilities that don't occur very often, such as deafness, blindness, deaf-blindness, orthopedic impairment. And quite often, the disabilities are very expensive and come with very expensive equipment. There was a young man who I had the pleasure of working with seven or eight years ago, who was four or five, could not move, could only move his eyes, but was cognitively intact. And so what we did was, because of the low incidence committee, because of the funding that the SELPA had, we were able to buy a classroom robot that he could guide with his eyes and he could participate in the classroom. And the kids were able to interact with him. And unfortunately, he's no longer with us. But I like to think that the three or four years that he was able to do that, we made a tremendous impact in his life. All right, go ahead and next slide, please. We fund non-public school pools. We do have about 75 children in non-public school. Each district pays into that pool so that you do not have to pay the cost of the placement yourself. We help forecast budgetary funding and provide fee for service billing for districts. And like I said, we're there to offer legal advice and guidance. I get usually three or four phone calls a week just asking for legal guidance and that's part of why we're there. Next slide, please. I'll just highlight here, one of the functions that I'm trying to get moving at the SELPA office is alternative dispute resolution. So you're all probably familiar with special ed being as litigious as it is, that there is a process if parents and the IEP team disagree, that you go to mediation through a state board or a state judge or to a hearing officer. And the hearing officer hears the case and then makes a decision. What the alternative dispute resolution process is, the purpose is to add another step at the beginning before things get intensely legal. I always remind districts that we serve children from ages three to 22. And if I'm disagreeing at a six-year-old's IEP, I may have another 16 years with that child. And so this adds another layer of support into districts where the SELPA office can come in as a neutral facilitator and can come in and mediate and hopefully bring the team to conclusion and decision. So that's one of the functions that I'm working on in the SELPA office. And next one, please. So I'll just end on our goals. We have the Community Advisory Committee. Each district has a Community Advisory Committee member. And the purpose of the Community Advisory Committee is to advise me and advise the superintendent's council. So we're trying to revive that, as we know it's difficult to get parents involved, especially with everything that's going on in everybody's lives right now. We're rebranding the SELPA. As I said, we're trying to get into the alternative dispute resolution business where people can see us as an alternative and someone who's there to help. We also make a priority of customer service and transparency. And then finally, moving from ideas to plans and actions. So we're trying to put, as I said, some plans forward, like alternative dispute resolution. And next slide, please, the last slide. I'll just close again by saying that the purpose of the SELPA is all 25 districts working together to bring services to kids and that we are all in this together. And so I appreciate your time, thank you. Do you have any questions, is there anything I can answer for you? Yes, sir.
I do got a question. You know, last night I had dinner with my son who was disabled slightly, cognitive damage and so on. And you started out your conversation with the story about the young boy that we spent a few days there and then he was gone. And last night, I had the pleasure of having dinner with my son and we went to a public place, as we have before many a times, with the whole family. And he said something to me that, boy, it resonates exactly where you were at. He was getting a little bit upset. I said, "Son, what's wrong?" And the conversation got a little bit heated and he said, "Well, Dad, you never asked me what I wanted." And I thought about that and I thought about that little boy you were just talking about. And it all is hitting me right now, I was thinking, as a parent, as a decent parent, I think, oh, I know what my son likes. I know what's good for my son. You know, I may have spent a lifetime not even asking him what I thought was good for him. Because what we think is help to a child may not be the help they actually want.
That's a very good point.
Right? Maybe, I don't know. You know, you're the professional. I thought I'd run it by you.
Well, the first thing I would say is, what I would say to any parent who shared such a personal story with me, would be, don't be too hard on yourself. And as a parent, I'd like to think that I'm a good parent. But you know, there are skeletons in my closet too. But I think that you do have a point. That we do, I think it's just part of the way the world is. One generation learns from the other. And one generation sees what one generation did and says, "We're going to do it differently." And then the next generation says, "You know what? They didn't take this into account, so we're going to do that differently." So I can see your point.
Yeah. Well, I just thought I'd run that by you and see what you thought about that. So I appreciate it.
I think that's a very poignant thought. I'm glad he could share that with you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And how old is he and what's he doing for a living? Construction worker and how old is he?
Yeah, that's, he's 19 now. Yes.
Were there any other questions that I could answer for you? Nope.
I would just like to thank Dr. for coming in, presenting to us. It's an absolute key position in this county. And the work is never done. And he is someone who tirelessly works with all 21 different personalities across the county. And some of us are rougher than others. And he, his focus remains on kids. And to me, that's something that I am very proud to serve and have the privilege of working with you. And I appreciate the fact that we have such strong leadership in our county SELPA. SELPs are each very different. And I think ours truly does an amazing job of trying to provide for all kids. So I appreciate your time and your willingness to come out.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
And I'd like to say thank you for your service, for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Moving on to item nine, consent and agenda action items. Actions prepared consent calendar are consistent with adopted and approved policies of the district and are deemed routine in nature. They'll be acted upon on one motion without discussion unless members of the board request an item be removed from the consent calendar. In that event, it will be taken up and ordered and indicated on the main agenda. Any questions from 9.1 to 9.4? If we have none, do we have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
We have a first, we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10, 10.1, approval of certified classified confidential management personnel action items. And this one was blank this month. It's usually been four pages long, but...
Well, we're having a tough time with finding employees for some of the open positions. So that's probably one of the reasons is we are unfortunately not hiring the number of individuals that we need to fill our positions or there would be far more to that of report.
A school that borders us did a job fair. Do we know if that was a benefit for them or was it just?
I think all, pretty much the same pool. I think the findings across from any job fair lately has been that the candidates seem to be pretty much the same candidates, that people are looking to areas of where perhaps our bonus is being offered, to areas where they're not sharing. Most of our districts with one-time dollars that are coming from the federal government as a result of COVID are able to only employ people temporarily. So we can't guarantee them a job perhaps longer than a year. And so that's very tough to tell someone to come work for you because we all know that when you work for someone, that is where we spend most of our day and it becomes part of us. And when you are hired and you can't be guaranteed that you're going to have a job much, but you know, for more than six months or a year, that's a tough thing to do for some. Especially if you have a family and you have to think of what's best for them. So you more than likely look for other areas and see if there are others that are offering more stability perhaps.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve or blank?
I made a motion.
We have a first, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It's always 10.1 in the last 12 years, it's always been 10.1. Moving on to 10.2, approval of Keys Union School District Mary Jackson's intern to multiple subject provisional internship permit status for the 2021-22 school year.
So this request is as, a couple of months back, we passed the approval of us. If we had to hire someone who was not fully credentialed at the time, that if they were involved or qualified for what is a provisional... that if they were involved or qualified for what is a provisional intern permit or into an internship with a university, that we would then agree if that was indeed the best candidate for the position. So we have found such a strong candidate who has a great partnership with the university that will support them as well as the district will. And so we're asking that the board approve this hire under the permit here. And it is for basically either one or two years. They have to show continued growth in enrollment in their academic program and complete it before they can apply for a full credential.
And we've done this many times with successful employees that we still have today.
Absolutely.
It's giving them a jumpstart on their career and a chance on us.
And I think what we're seeing more and more candidates as we look for teachers, there are just not enough teachers that have completed the full credentialing program. But that doesn't mean necessarily that you're not going to be a great fit and that with the proper support, you can't be successful. And so especially now when there is such a shortage, we really do have to invest in good individuals. And I think that we have one to do so.
All right. Any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
We have a first, we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten point three, approval of certificated fixed stipend schedules to reflect long-term sub-rate increase temporary for twenty-one, twenty-two school year only.
Yeah, so we had asked last year for an increase to our sub-rate pay for the daily rate because we were having a very tough time finding substitutes. And that continues to be the issue. So we are using our one-time COVID funds, one of the many different funds that have come through to be able to have the rate remain so that we can compete with other districts. Because if we're not offering basically the same or close to a larger district, then we're not, you know, the incentive is not there necessarily. And so we need to be competitive. And so that's what we're asking to do, is to continue for the year. It will, if it continues past that, of course, it would come before the board to revise that again if need be.
Any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
We have a first, we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten point four, public hearing of educator effectiveness block grant. And we're gonna open that at six thirty-two. Mr. Brazil?
So this educator effectiveness, effectiveness of block grant was just recently put through. It requires a plan for this, we have until two thousand twenty-five, I believe, to expend the funds. So what we have done is drew up a plan on how we can use the funds to be supportive of teachers. So whether it be for their induction program funding, for administrators to get training if they need, and also to invest in professional development just across the district in areas that you may need. So we submitted our plan. We, having so much on the plate this year, we've actually asked that our plan or our beginning of our expenditures will be for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which sets us out in time to complete the, and give people, there's so much on everyone's plate that we don't want to add one more training or one more program to anyone's plate at this point. So we're thankful for the funding and we'll expend it, but we have, we're waiting to pass that along to other years.
Questions or concerns? Anything from the public? We'll close at six thirty-four. Moving on to item ten point five, approval of CSEA MOU extension. Mr. Brazil?
So we, every month, we have met with our bargaining units. And this is our classified bargaining unit. We review the MOU we have in place to address safety concerns related to COVID. And so the CSEA has agreed to for another month, and we are doing that. You're probably going to see this every month as we do, as conditions change, we will present it to you.
And that's working really well with everyone.
Community captain and our classified staff and certificate have been very willing to work with everyone. And everyone is doing what they can given the circumstances and times we live in.
Any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first, we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten point six, approval of vaccine resolution twenty-one, twenty-two oh six. Mr. Brazil?
So the district, the board has asked that I place this resolution on the agenda. And it is that we fully recognize the fact that if a mandate does indeed come from the state that says we must vaccinate and we must adhere to those rules, then we realize that as a district, we don't have the power to say no. And in fact, we must abide and adhere to it. However, I think that the district also feels that there are areas that are being pushed on or implemented that a parent should have the right to do. And so this resolution simply acknowledges the fact that we as a district recognize that parents should have a choice. And that voice may not be heard at this point by legislative means. And we've asked that people continue to write with their opinion pro or not because those are the individuals that have the power to make any of the changes. As school districts, we're pinned up against community because we're asked to enforce. So we're always the bad person. We cannot win, and this isn't about winning. This honestly is a much bigger thing that we in education did not take or felt that this would be our role as educators. We're not individuals who are trained to play political games or to administer medications or to go into public health. We are educators, and we want to share that that's really where our focus is. And parenting should be left up to parents. So I placed it, I asked the board to vote their, how they wish to do so. But again, I was asked to place it on the agenda, and I have done so.
I'll start with my comments. This would have been on the last month's agenda, but I stalled it for a month. I totally support the idea that parents have a choice. I totally support that this board shouldn't even take an action on it because it's the parents' choice what they want to do. And until it's the eleventh vaccine on the list, we have no say in it anyways. I feel if we make a vote to say no tonight, it'd be a false hope for the parents later down the road when, if it, three months or ten years, if it does get on that vax list. It, we're voting, typically, we're voting to say, no, we don't want to do something that we're not being forced to do, but we're not doing it anyways. So I think it's not really an accurate vote, and I just don't want it to be like false hope. And I know every board member knows how I feel about this. Mr. Brazil and I, we've gone back and forth. We both respect each other's. I understand where he's coming from. I totally, you know, I'm not saying I do not want the vax given until we're forced to. But that's a given right now, and I think making a vote is false hope.
But we want the parents to know that we're behind them on it.
They already know. We've done parent squares. Mr. Brazil's at every sports game, talking to parents that are arguing with it. So many parent squares. I think this whole community and outside community know where we stand. I just think the vote's not necessary.
I vote yes.
Any other discussion?
I vote yes, being transparent. I believe that parents should have the right of choice. Not as, like Mr. Brazil said, that we're educators. We're not in healthcare.
That's why we shouldn't even take this vote.
But I think the transparency, you know, where we stand.
That's a bad thing, too.
Any other comments?
Well, I don't think the vote's gonna, well, it isn't gonna change anything.
Absolutely nothing.
There's nothing because we're not gonna force kids to get a vaccination or anybody unless we're told, made to by the government.
And we're not now, so that's why I don't think we need to vote.
But I don't, really, they just don't hurt anything, vote me.
Okay. Mr. Green?
I stand with my president.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion. There we vote.
Vote for what?
This resolution that was brought up.
All right. We have a first, we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten point seven, these are the updated ones. Approval resolution twenty-one, twenty-two oh seven. California State Preschool Program Consolidated Funding Application Fiscal Year.
So all this is passing a resolution stating that you are applying for the consolidated application with the state for the preschool funding.
Any questions or concerns? Mr. Daniel, you have anything to add? All right.
Looks like you have big teeth.
It does. Oh. All right, do you have any questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. I think Jimmy got it.
Jimmy got it. We got a first by Jimmy. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten point eight, this is also updated. Approval of California State Preschool Program Continued Funding Application Fiscal Year twenty-two, twenty-three. That's pulling us far out there. Any questions or concerns?
It's just a formality that we must bring this before the board before we apply for any of the federal funding or state funding.
All right. Any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
We have a first, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion items, LCAP update.
So our LCAP, we will be at the February board meeting bringing forth a, what we call or what's being called now, an LCAP update, or kind of a status check on what we're doing, how we are doing with our goals, how we are doing in terms of, the real transparency is going to be about what we're doing with our ESER funds or some of the federal funds and how that is coming along. I will say that one of the struggles that we will have to share as part of that report is that we are unable to hire the people that we need to implement some of the programs. Because if we have such a poor application pool of someone applying, then that makes it tough. But so rather than having it as simply a report that I'll share with the board and with staff, it is not something that needs to be approved. So I'm kind of thankful for that, that it's not a natural, whole other plan which we were worried might be. So we will be doing that at the February. And we're already beginning to think about next year's LCAP because it will be due for our due meetings. So that's about all on, and same thing with ESER three.
All right. Moving on to eleven point two, SMS track committee meeting?
So we continue to, Eric is working hard to look at different possibilities. We will be meeting in the coming, it will probably not be obviously before the holiday that we'll have time to meet. But we are looking at different solutions, different possibilities with the field, looking at what can and can't be done. We're working with an architect who is a landscape architect. And we're also looking at our financial needs, what can we do? And how can we pace this out to get some form of a track or a field that can be greater use to students? Because right now, it's a tough field that's not a good thing to have kids out on because it's just the golfers and the squirrels have condominiums set up and they're having a good time with it and they're not moving. So we'll have to address that. But again, the committee will continue to meet. And I know that Jimmy will hold me to that. He will tell me, and he knows that the work is being done. It's, nothing is as quick as we would like it to be.
It's not as quick as doing your backyard.
No.
Moving on to eleven point three, library lease between San Luis County and Key Union School District?
So with the library lease, we are working with Raoul Mendez at the county. And there has actually been positive interactions going back and forth. I think we are now waiting for a meeting to be scheduled to share kind of what the proposals may be. That the board then will have those brought before you to approve. So that's where we are. We're continuing to speak.
All right. Moving on to board reports, or reports. And I'd actually like to move Mr. Green up so he's on a time crunch so he can do his report, and we'll let you slide out and we can finish ours.
Yeah.
Is that okay with the board?
Yeah, so we're starting with me?
Yeah.
Well, my, where's our friend that was here?
He ran out as soon as you got on.
You know, I only have one major note here from that. Is, you talked about a advisory committee. Is that something that we can apply for? Is there an opening?
Oh, I was gonna say, it is absolutely something that we're always seeking people to be on and to work on. So if you are interested, absolutely. It is something that the advisory committee, it takes time and it takes commitment to being to some of the meetings and things. And so it's, but it is open to anyone. It's not, so if you're interested in it, I would be more than happy to put the name forward as to being part of that committee.
I would like that. All right, we'll let you sneak out a couple minutes early. He had a prior engagement and he was really watching the clock, so. All right, we're gonna move on to, back up to twelve point one, superintendent report?
All right, well, I want to congratulate the girls' basketball teams for being great athletes, but really amazing students with heart and skill. Even, they continue to play well and improve with each game. But what I have been so impressed by is their ability to be good sports, to adhere to the masking, which as we go around the county, there is some that adhere and some that don't. And our students are far better at maintaining and following those rules than our adults are. And I think that that's something to be said about our students. They are amazing. They are playing their heart out. They have passion. It was amazing to see them the first day they begin. It is more incredible to see them as they grow in each and every game that we've had. I think they will be part of the tournament coming up, as the student representative shared with us. And two of, both of them are part of that. But really, also the coaching, because kids are amazing. But you have to have individuals who are willing to work with students and to bring out the best in them. And I think we have that, and I'm very proud of it. Our quarantine numbers have declined, and I appreciate the efforts of our staff as we continue to do everything we possibly can, whether it's cleaning. And our maintenance crews have been amazing. The masking mandate is still in effect for TK through twelve schools and including childcare programs. Just this evening, a while ago, I don't have the full details, so please do not take anything that I say at its full word because I may not have all of the details. We are being told that we will be, our students will be allowed to play indoor physical sports without a mask if they are in agreement or agree to be tested. And the testing is looking like it would be three times per week. I'll leave it at that because I will have to evaluate, look at it, and then I will share with staff and the board as I hear more on the details. The turkey dinner was a great success. I had a very good dinner last night and had a really good time working with staff and getting the meals together, having those kids run them out and take them to parents. As the students shared earlier, they were amazing, hard work, camaraderie. It was, it just feels different. And it's so nice to be among people and not everything being necessarily on Zoom. So that was wonderful. And I want to thank Jimmy, who really, his servants who, or inmates who really put an awful lot of work into that, the principal, and also some amazing people who have worked for us. And they've retired and they were willing to come back and support us. And I think that that speaks volumes. So I know that Jimmy had his nephew, Jeff, Michael, Mel, Christine, all the teachers, parents, students, and Delah who came back. I didn't finish that, but she came back and truly orchestrated and laid out the foundation. And we kind of all pulled together and it made it work. So I want to thank everybody for that. It was a great fundraiser. And again, everyone worked really hard. And if I'm forgetting anyone who worked, I thank all of them, so. We're still looking for an art and a music teacher, which I so desperately wish we could find. I think it is something that, given children's mental health at this time, art and music would be, I think, a very therapeutic thing for many. So we're continuing to look, again, spotting qualified candidates. That's the tough thing. ESER plan, I've already shared with you that we continue to implement it along with LCAP. I will share the update in February. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with an education foundation leadership group that is called Innovate, and they are out of San Luis Obispo. And I shared with the board that they are looking at perhaps establishing a science lab, but really a modern workforce lab. So it would be... So it would be curriculum and materials that students will work on project-based things. And we, what they are seeking is to get philanthropists to donate so that we can begin the lab. It has no cost to the district. However, if they are able to fund it and get it started, then the district commitment is that we will provide staff development for teachers to be able to use it. And also that we, as we consume some of the materials that are consumables, that we would have to replenish those. So if it's any curriculum materials that are consumables, for example, if there is any labs or anything to be done, those, that equipment and supplies for those. So I will be meeting with them. We've met. Jeff has also been a part of the initial meetings. We've met in Zoom. They have implemented this in San Luis Obispo in every one of their elementary schools. They are wanting to begin secondary or middle school, but they, they're not quite ready to do so. They picked our area because Mr. Hopeum was a gentleman who now sits on their foundation board, actually did some work for the district and comes from the area and really felt that this would be district of need for such a program and has a real passion for our district. He loves it here. He understands our community. And he thinks that this would be a great fit, which I absolutely agree. And it fits so nicely because both Ms. McDaniel's and our principals have been working towards establishing a STEM lab program and working with our county office, who have been very supportive. But this may be in addition too, and maybe we'll speed up things. But so we're, again, we're not expected to put any financial portion into it at this point. I will continue to share with the board whatever details we learn. But tomorrow, I'll actually get to meet both their president and one of the board members tomorrow. And I've already talked about the lack of applications or applicants for our pool of hiring. I want to thank staff, students, and parents for their support during the pumpkin run and the, I call it a run or a trot or a skip this time we knew. It was a great opportunity for parents to be on campus. It felt like a real get-together. And so that was very nice. I think Mr. Murray for his work and the rest of the board for attending and helping to cook hamburgers and enjoying it. It really was a very good event. And we continue to work with our county office of education on multi tiers of student support, which we will be doing all we can to implement within the next coming year and a half. And I want to share that, once again, our teachers and our classified staff, everyone on campus, has dealt with all of this class disruption of quarantining, extra cleaning of having. We have grown to be very patient. And there are days it's, it's tough. And I appreciate the fact that everyone has really kind of stuck together. And that's needed to go through what we're going through. I, last thing, and I wish to thank everyone in our district for their ongoing support. And I'd like to wish everyone a blessed Thanksgiving in the company of their family and loved ones. It is indeed a season of Thanksgiving. And I think we have much to be thankful for, so thank you.
Thank you. And you'll go to Wes's house and tell him all that again, right? Moving on to board member comments. Ms. Robbins?
Well, I'd just like to thank all the volunteers that really made the turkey dinner a great success. It was just, you know, it's really a fun thing. We all worked hard, but everybody was laughing and had a good time. And it was nice to see everybody all getting together for one, one goal, one good goal. Good way to start off our giving season, I think. And a special thanks to Della Pratt who come out of retirement to help us out with, she did for years. And made us feel more comfortable knowing she was there. And then my nephew come in the day before and brought a lot of his own ingredients to help us make some delicious gravy. Really appreciate it. And I'd like to wish everybody a well-deserved break and a happy Thanksgiving.
There was no laughing at the cleaning dishes.
And if you ever need any dishes done, Jeff Reed is your man.
There was only laughing over here with Mr. Brazil. All right. Moving on to Ms. Brenau.
Yes, I'd like to thank the staff and instructors that dedicated their time with the students working here at Keys. It's been a difficult year. Next week, you guys are gonna be off. Enjoy your time. Eat well, laugh, have fun with your family, and enjoy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
I want to say I've been going to all the basketball games and the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade girls have been good. I mean, they've been great. But I really want to say thank you to Waterford. Waterford's sportsmanship has been awesome. And besides that, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. And he has been at every game? Moving on. Mr. Brazil's been at every home game.
And if I could just add something. I, Mr. Green, or I actually contacted the middle school in Waterford and shared how amazing their teams were and how cooperative and especially given some of the other teams that have come. So I shared that and they were very appreciative.
Thank you. I'll start off. I have a list, but I just want to reflect on my abstain vote. I didn't disagree or agree with it. That's why I abstained from it. In the twelve years I've gone on the board, eleven years I've been on president, we've disagreed time and before, but I didn't disagree with you guys. That's why I didn't vote no. I respect all you guys. I respect Wes. He voted, he always says he'll stick to the president. I believe in the parents' choice. I believe in, we're not doing it, so there's no reason to vote. So it's, you guys have all known how I felt. Mr. Brazil's known for the last three months that I was gonna take that stance. I just think it was unnecessary, but I understand and I will move on. Sports has been amazing. I really appreciate all the board members. And Mr. Brazil's been going out. Waterford was amazing. We've had issues with other teams and it's, you know, it's not, it's not, it's about kids. It's not about coaches, it's not about fans. I do want to say that every game that Mr. Brazil goes to, except for today, he's had altercations about masks or vaccines or, and it's always away parents. It's not at home. And I do want to say I appreciate how you handle it. He's kind of tough at first and then he soothes it out and then they're shaking hands at the end of it. I don't know how it works, but. And I do want to say that Mr. Brazil does sell to anybody that asks that this board does not support the vaccines as of now. And that's another reason I felt the way I did is because we're already living that. Turkey dinner was a main, huge success. Della came in just to kind of get us started and then she left. But a lot of credit goes to Mel and Jimmy took on all the stress. I mean, Jimmy, we couldn't have done it without you, really. I mean.
Well, we would run out of dishes without you.
But it's one of those things and we all know, we grew up eating that meal. And it's important to us. And all the families that commented on Facebook and messages us. It felt like home for a little while. It felt like childhood memories and that's why we served the turkey dinner. And it's amazing to see all the staff who don't get to spend time together serving next to each other. And it is all laughs. It's fun and games. And it, it's not stressful until it's over, right, Jimmy? Pumpkin run was great. We cooked six, seven hundred hamburgers. I don't even know how many, but. This board does everything for the right reason. I believe it. I stand by it. You'll see us out. You'll see us everywhere. We make decisions on how we think is best for the community. And I stand by all our decisions we've ever made even if we don't agree. So I appreciate you guys and I respect you even though we don't always agree. And I expect, and I respect Wes for his always willingness to support the president because he feels he's a leader.
All right. Moving on to the next board meetings. December eighth, oh, that's an early one because of all the holiday schedules, is a closed session at five-thirty, regular session at six.